Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Regular Agenda Meeting for this Monday, April 7, 2025. Thank you all for coming tonight, and for those of you at home, welcome. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter. Councilmember Boratella.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Here.
Present. Thank you very much. Now, if you'd please stand and join me in a brief moment of silence in honor and respect of our servicemen and women serving this nation at home and abroad, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, thank you all for joining us tonight here in the great city of Lakewood. We always start our regular meetings with the proclamation and presentation section of the agenda, and tonight we have several. The first is a proclamation recognizing April 11 through April 17, 2025, as Black Wellness Week, and I am pleased tonight to have good friends of mine, Keith Blocker and Christina Blocker, present from Momentum Professional Strategy Partners, to receive the proclamation. So join me up at the podium, and we'll present the proclamation and have time for photo. You guys are growing up. What happened? You're getting big. Is it really? Is this? I can't believe it. Well, it's good to see you guys. Well, I am pleased, on behalf of the council, to present this proclamation to Christina and Keith Blocker. I've known Christina and Keith for many, many years, before they were married and before these two became a reality. It's wonderful to see you both tonight. Whereas in 1915, Booker T. Washington launched National Health Improvement Week, later known as Negro Health Week, to spotlight and address health disparities in the black community, including poverty, lack of access to formal health care, poor nutrition, poor sanitation, and a lack of access to housing. And whereas the goal of this Health Week was to foster advocacy and education to remove barriers so that black and African-American people could achieve prosperity and success, and have access to education, health care, housing, and to build family wealth. And whereas holistic well-being encompassing physical, mental, emotional, and social health is a priority for all communities, and today, more than 100 years after the creation of National Health Improvement Week, health disparities still exist, especially within the black community in Washington State. And whereas work to eliminate these disparities calls for initiatives that are both inclusive and resource-conscious and involve a community-driven approach focusing on leveraging existing resources and capacities. And whereas the Elevate Black Awareness Initiative aims to address health disparities facing the black community through partnerships at all levels, including grassroots advocacy, local government, and by working with the Washington State Department of Health, to raise awareness and to establish actionable steps to enhance health outcomes and to build a sustainable model for future wellness initiatives. And whereas government policies have enduring effects on the communities where they are implemented, and in 2021, the Lakewood City Council signed an equity statement, committing this city to instill equity as a priority when developing policies and delivering city services, and when enacting initiatives to support and celebrate the diversity of our community. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council does hereby proclaim April 11, 2025, through April 17, 2025, as Black Wellness Week here in the city of Lakewood, and we urge community groups, nonprofits, and other local governments to look at ways we can all further improve the health outcomes for the black communities, and by eliminating barriers and prioritizing access to services and programs for the betterment of our entire community. Proclaim the 7th day of April, 2025, all of us here in the Lakewood City Council. And Keith and Christina, again, it's my personal pleasure and our group pleasure to welcome you to the city of Lakewood and to present you with this proclamation. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, first, I want to thank Lakewood City Council, Jason Whelan, for having the courage to proclaim Black Wellness Week in this day and time where there's an outward attack on diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's my firm belief that there's nothing wrong with diversity. When we think about the tapestry of cultures that make America what it is and has added to the history of our great country, our great nation, that still has room for improvement, but great nonetheless, it is the diversity that exists in all communities that make us who we are. My wife is from Canada, Christine is from Canada, and she taught me that Canada celebrates the mosaic. And when I think about the mosaic, it's the tapestry. All the pieces look different, very much different, but it's the collection, the collective of that tapestry, of that mosaic, that makes it beautiful. It's the differences in us that is which that makes us great. So I want to thank you for honoring the history of Booker T. Washington, many of the disparities that existed when he had the vision to establish Negro Health Week. Many of those issues and concerns still exist. And we also affirm believers in targeted universalism, which is the concept that is when we do something to address vulnerable communities, we address all communities. And one great example of that is curb cuts. When we think about curb cuts and why they were created, for people who experience life in wheelchairs, so many of us benefit from curb cuts. Women with, women and families who need to get their strollers on curbs, people who are delivering goods and services to us utilize curb cuts, and it just benefits all communities. So when we do something for vulnerable populations, vulnerable communities, we do something for all communities. So thank you.
Do you have something to say about your birthday? You can't.
It's my birthday on April 11.
Hey, that's the important thing. Good for you.
Thought today, it's on April 11.
We should do a proclamation for that.
Yeah.
Well, that was a great, great opportunity to express good wishes and wellness and a happy birthday as well. So thank you for coming. The next is a proclamation recognizing April 26, 2025, as Parks Appreciation Day. And for this, I'll have Councilmember Ryan Pearson and Jason Gerwin, the Chair of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, join each other at the podium to receive the proclamation. And then, gentlemen, we'll have a photo afterwards as well.
All right, and we have many projects going on in the city right now as far as parks go. Harry Todd Park, American Lake Park, we just secured and cleared and hydro-seated some space for some new park in the downtown, so this is a very fitting proclamation. Lots going on with parks right now. Whereas well-maintained parks and playgrounds, a variety of nature trails and open spaces, places to gather like community and cultural centers and historic sites, all make a city a desirable place to live, work, and visit. And whereas parks are a place where a sense of community is created, where people can reflect, re-energize, or socialize, a place where everyone is welcome regardless of age, race, beliefs, or social and economic status. And whereas parks and open spaces provide a welcome respite from today's fast-paced, high-tech lifestyle and contribute to our ongoing economic vitality and protect and preserve our natural environment. And whereas on Saturday, April 26, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, volunteers of all ages will work at park sites around Lakewood, committing their time to clean up and beautify Edgewater Park, Fort Silicon Park, Harry Todd Park, Kiwanis Park, Primley Park, Spring Brook Park, and Lakewood Community Garden. And whereas we could not do this annual cleanup and beautification without work, without the help from these hundreds of volunteers who step up year after year, representing our local businesses, community and civic groups, and churches and organizations to make sure our parks are ready for the busy spring and summer seasons. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council do hereby proclaim April 26, 2025, as Parks Appreciation Day in the city of Lakewood, and urges all residents to show support by volunteering on April 26 at one of our park sites to help beautify and protect our parks, proclaimed the 7th day of April, 2025. And presenting to Mr. Gerwin.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Pearson, Mayor Whelan, and City Council, City Manager Caulfield. Once again, thank you for recognizing Parks Appreciation Day and the people behind it. It's an honor to accept this award. Might be my 12th, 14th time, I'm not sure, and so was thinking about it today, and how do you shake up the message a little bit? But it's not really about shaking up the message. I think the message still stays the same, and, you know, this day is more than just a chance to spruce up our parks and make our green spaces a little nicer. It's a powerful reminder of how parks bring us all together in this community, and neighbors working side by sides, kids planting trees, families reconnecting. We accomplish real work, but the real value is in we build community on Parks Appreciation Day. The pandemic reminded us just how vital parks are, you know, to our health, our well-being, our sense of connection. We saw it firsthand when everything else shuts down, you know, just how important open spaces become. The truth is, that truth still holds today, you know, and it's why continued investment, especially in the often invisible, essential parks maintenance work, is so critical. It's always difficult to squeeze budgets, but we've got to find ways to continue to fund and increase funding for maintenance. None of this is possible without the leadership of Mary Dodsworth and her staff. She makes a real difference in this community. So thank you, City Council, for your support. Encourage all the residents to jump in, participate, get a chance to meet your neighbor, get a little work done, make new connections, but there's also opportunities year-round. And so if there's interest in caring for these spaces, reach out to the Parks Department. There's always opportunity. Again, thank you, Council, for your continued support.
Thank you.
I do one shout-out. We have Zoe, she's a youth commissioner, and I'll tell you, impressed by her as a youth commissioner. She shows up, is punctual, contributes, and we need more youth like Zoe in the community contributing.
The next proclamation will be that recognizing April 2025 as Fair Housing Month, and for this, I'd like to have Councilmember Branstadter meet with Jasmine Jefferson of the Tacoma-Pierce County Association of Realtors to receive the proclamation.
Well, this is a proclamation identifying Fair Housing Month. I think I should preface this by saying that in Lakewood, there is a great awareness throughout the community about the importance of housing and fair housing. It's something that's been risen to the public attention greatly over the past few years. And so while we are joining many, many other communities around the country in recognizing Fair Housing Month as sort of a national moniker of doing that, that is not to say that in the city of Lakewood, every month is not Fair Housing Month, and that in every month and every week, there are things going on of trying to make fair, affordable housing a reality here in Lakewood, going on to do that. But we're part of the national team that's working to do that, and so let me continue with this proclamation about fair housing. Fair Housing Month more broadly. And whereas the month of April marks the anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act of 1968, which prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, and national origin. And whereas fair housing is a fundamental right, ensuring that all individuals have the opportunity to secure housing free from discrimination and enjoy the dignity of equal access to housing opportunities. And whereas housing providers, real estate professionals, policymakers, community leaders, and advocates play a critical role in upholding fair housing laws and promoting equitable housing practices that strengthen our communities. And whereas the principles of fair housing support inclusive communities, economic growth, and neighborhood stability, benefiting both housing providers and residents. And whereas the city of Lakewood recognizes that ongoing education, training, and enforcement of fair housing laws are essential to eliminating discrimination and ensuring that housing opportunities remain open to all. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council do hereby recognize April 2025 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Lakewood, and recognizes that many people and organizations in our community open doors of housing opportunity to all residents. We just proclaim 7th day of April, 2025, by the entire Lakewood City Council.
My name is Jasmine Jefferson. Thank you, Council and Mayor, for having the Tacoma-Pierce County Association of Realtors here to accept this proclamation and for your continued support of fair housing. In the city of Lakewood and throughout Pierce County, there is a lot of work yet to be done. We are also seeing some barriers being put into place currently that we have a lot of work to do to try to address. So I do hope that we can work together to continue the work that started so long ago. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next. Next, last but not least, in the proclamation and presentation section, is the Youth Council Report. We are pleased to have Gabrielle Flores and Nathan Lewis with us tonight. Gentlemen, come on up. Let's hear it. For all youth who are here tonight, please feel free to come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Whelan, Deputy Mayor Moss, and Council. My name is Gabriel Flores, and I'm a senior from Clover Park High School. During tonight's Youth Council meeting, we finalized the details of this Saturday's Youth Empowerment Summit. As of today, we have reached a record high of 222 students, all registered to attend Saturday. A reminder was sent to the list today and will be sent again on Friday. We also have 29 vendors committed to tabling at the event. We would also love the Council to make an appearance and share in with the fun. And now I'll turn it over to Nathan to tell you more about another event that we have planned later in April.
Good evening, Mayor Whelan, Deputy Mayor Moss, and Councilmember. My name is Nathan Lewis, and I'm a senior at Harrison Preparatory School. In addition to the Youth Empowerment Summit, we've been working on providing another event for Lakewood youth to look forward to. On Friday, April 25, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m., we're hosting a cooking and crafting event at Tillicum Community Center. Participants will be taught how to make Filipino-style smash burgers by a local caterer who looks for opportunities to support local youth. In addition, participants will create keychains, necklaces, and bracelets with fun materials such as Legos, beads, and other materials. This concludes our presentation, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions, other members? Councilmember Bell.
Yes, Councilmember Bell and Councilmember Pearson want to know the details on, we heard smash burgers.
Yeah, the food. They heard some of the food.
Want to know what those details are again.
So Smash Burgers is a style.
They are, but when and what?
Friday, April 25, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. at Tillicum Community Center.
And then for this weekend, it starts at 11:00, is that right, Shannon? So for us to enjoy the kickoff festivities, we should be there a little bit before, around 11:00? Okay. Please. Yep. And what role, if any, you'd like us to play, other than just observers and active listeners?
We have so much fun planned. We didn't want to shove a bunch of stuff in. So we would love to have you there to, you know, be present with the students. Of course, you're going to do the land acknowledgement. We also have an additional opportunity for youth to win some pretty great raffle prizes as donated or contributed by our partner, one of the Twin Star. But we have a bingo going on to where it says on there, two of the squares says, "Interact and meet with a City Council member." So I will be asking you when I do, when I do kind of the, not the welcome, but whatever, if you guys could stand up so these students can see your faces and then look for you throughout the event, that would be awesome.
I'm not sure if they get that, if that's counted as a win or a loss, but I know, yeah. Yeah, so. Good. Well, we look forward to it, and thank you for all of your work throughout the year putting this together. I know it's taken some time and certainly some good thought by all the students, so we look forward to seeing you on Saturday. Thanks.
Thank you.
You bet. Yeah, you're all good. Thank you. Okay, next is the public comment section of tonight's meeting. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to the City Clerk, Ms. Brianna Schumacher, at 6000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or via email at BSchumacher at cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the City Council electronically, but for purposes of a good, transparent record, the clerk will read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Mayor, we received no comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Thank you. Members of the audience may comment on items pertaining to city business during the public comment section. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. We ask that you simply state your name and your residence, such as Paul Bokey, Lakewood, Washington, and then you'll have your three minutes to speak on the clock. If you'd like to provide virtual public comment, you're certainly welcome to do so by joining the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number 253-215-8782, entering the meeting ID number 868-7263-2373. When you enter the room, please use the raise the hand feature so we know who to call upon, and we'll certainly do so. Again, each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. So what I'd like to do first is call on those who signed in on the sign-in sheet in person. If you didn't get a chance to sign the sign-in sheet, that's okay. If you'd like to provide public comment, just please queue up to the microphone. Uh, the two individuals who did comment are already, I think, part of the Fair Housing Proclamation, but I'll call their name anyway. Jasmine Jefferson, Jason Gerwin for the Parks Proclamation, and Levita Lester Brinkley signed in. So I think they were here for the proclamations. Again, does anybody here in the chambers would like to provide public comment? You're more than welcome to do so at this time. Okay, seeing none in person, Madam Clerk, let's turn to those who may be joining us virtually. We have a few hands raised. The first is Mr. James Dunlop.
Oh, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh, my name is James Dunlop and I'm a Lakewood resident. You know, I've just been, uh, thinking about the environment and with particular reference to, uh, the new government, the new president and what Donald Trump has, uh, been authorizing in terms of the environment and how now, uh, a lot of, uh, America's United States' national forests are under threat. And I was thinking, you know, it's, it's kind of, uh, obvious to some that this is a problem with a supposedly right-wing government, a right-wing presidency, when you think about property rights and property owners being able to do what the hell they like. But I think we have to get the balance right. And I've been thinking, looking at Lakewood, it's not just about a problem from the small government property owner view, but it's, it's also, it also comes from the other side of the side of the aisle. I mean, if you look at, you know, what's happening, what's happened in Lakewood, it's, you could say that big government, the sort of progressive big government is just as damaging as the right. I mean, you look at the results of grants, funding coming from central government, from state government. I mean, if you look at the destruction at the sort of tiny homes village, there was a grant and it seems to be sort of an unholy alliance of private interests and, uh, private interests and this sort of calls for some sort of humanitarian, uh, action, in this case, for homeless and whenever you get, or some aspects of a homeless, but it seems that whenever you get government, get money that hasn't necessarily been earned in the community, just dumped on the community, the community just feels they have to spend it, you know, like, for example, the, you know, the infamous example of the, was it twelve Gary Oaks, something like that on Phillips that were just cut down to make, make, make way for, uh, for a sidewalk and you know, that there was, it just had to be done because the money was there. The money has to be spent, had to be spent and you know, s- sometimes, you know, one thinks of, you know, one thinks that maybe there could be some environmental advantages in small government in taxpayers' money not being thrown around because when taxpayers' money is thrown around, uh, you get imbalances. It's just money for the sake of it, but money the community hasn't earned. So the community just feels it has to spend it, the community as represented by the city bureaucracy. So, uh, I mean, I'm still thinking about this matter, but it's just interesting. It's not just an issue of the right being anti the environment. It seems that the, that the, that the left and the big government side of the aisle does can be, uh, can be just as damaging as we see in Lakewood and the local environment.
Next is Dennis Haugen.
Yeah, Dennis Haugen from Sioux Falls, South Dakota, formerly a resident of Lakewood. And it's, uh, of course, it's kind of a mess nowadays because, uh, there's several topics that I could talk about that it will affect you most certainly, but so I'll focus on this one. I could never quite figure out why you could have a law like, uh, you know, the law about who can come into the country and how they come in the country without anybody asking why was that law put there in the first place? And then looking at history and see if there's any hazards to the public if you allow people to come into the country illegally. We should have learned something after nine eleven. We had all kinds of people running around the the country that shouldn't have been your planning. Well, we expected that might also be the case. But, um, anyway, um, one of the things that's often brought up there is, uh, housing. You know, you know what eliminates, uh, the need for the government to be concerned about housing? It's called first, make sure that people have jobs. You know, that we are managing our economy in a way that people have jobs because people with jobs have money and then the market can, can tailor itself to what the abilities and the needs are, you see? And, um, you know, many states, I'm looking here and, uh, there's only thirteen sanctuary states themselves. But we'll have to listen to and learn, I suppose, from the attorneys about federal supremacy laws. I'm not going to say what they are, but that seems to be something we're going to learn something about as, uh, certain lawyers fight to protect, uh, people that come into the country illegally and certain others are trying to get them out of the country. And, um, so anyways, but there's many, many aspects to this and, uh, you know, I see where, uh, uh, blue states are moving to red states. Uh, man, the construction going on here in Sioux Falls, and we're not even listed as one of the top five states for getting all kinds of new people. But I'm telling you, the building is going on. The market is responding to the need for housing. And jobs can do that. But if you're just feeding people cash, money on debit cards, you know, you won't get anything except more drugs. Thank you.
Next caller, I believe, is Christina Manetti, although it's, I can't tell for sure.
Oh, hello. This is Christina Manetti. That's my, um, Polish, my Polish nickname. I have two comments to make tonight, one following the other. Uh, one for the Gary Oak Coalition. If you could start my timer now, that would be nice. Um, Christina Manetti Lakewood, tonight, the Mount Tacoma Drive roadway project is on the agenda. I live just around the corner. We request that you immediately inform everyone who lives along that stretch of Mount Tacoma Drive personally, so they don't wake up one day next year and find that the right-of-way in front of their house is being dug up for sidewalks and gutters. So that they know that you are planning to put streetlights in front of their houses that will probably shine into their windows at night, disturbing humans inside and wildlife and plants outside. You should have told them already. We don't want it to be like on Phillips Road where a few years ago, one of the residents came home to discover that several big Gary Oaks were being cut down at the back edge of his property above the road. Those Gary Oaks, as he told me, were one of the reasons he bought the property in the first place. He was told that they were actually on public right-of-way and they were cut down. His backyard, instead of being shady and shielded from the road, was now laid bare to the street, its noise and fumes. Residents have a right to know what is happening, especially when it will affect them so directly. They have a right to know well ahead of time so that they can communicate their concerns to the city and so that the city can divulge all relevant information to them well in advance. It should not be a situation where someone who happens to read the agenda finds out and has to disseminate the information. Residents should not feel that they have to follow the city's every move in order to know what horrible thing is about to happen next. The city cannot expect people to read agendas and the city's bureaucratic website and attend city council meetings and study sessions. Not long ago, one of the council members made a suggestion to the effect that, quote, "If you had only listened to the study session, you would have known that." It is our fault for not knowing? No, it's the city's fault for not telling us. I talked with a resident who will be severely affected by adversely affected by this project. Her house will be laid bare to the road, whereas now it has very large trees and a big hedge in front of it, protecting it from the noise and giving her a peaceful view, as well as from the cars, that too often goes so disturbingly fast on Mount Tacoma Drive. She was not informed and is opposed to this project. Save your trees in your plans. You have a forty percent canopy goal after all. We request that you contact every resident and property owner on Mount, Mount Tacoma Drive and inform them honestly and fully about everything that this project will involve and specifically how it will impact them. And now my second comment. Uh, I'm speaking on behalf of Gary Oak Coalition. I'm Christina Manetti. We would like to ask that you inform residents and property owners immediately about the details of the Mount Tacoma Drive Sidewalk Project and also that you take maximum efforts to protect the trees and especially the Gary Oaks that are along that road. There are Gary Oaks that appear not to be in the public right-of-way, but whose roots will be covered by more impermeable surfaces and adverse impact that will negatively affect their health and longevity, probably. Lakewood Municipal Code prohibits Gary Oaks from having hard surfaces within their drip lines, i.e. their critical root zones. The city should be sure to avoid hard surfaces near those Gary Oaks. The city needs to remember that these Gary Oaks are one of our keystone species that is supposed to enjoy special protections in the state of Washington. Whenever possible, the city needs to improve their conditions, not degrade them. In general, the city will be contributing yet more impermeable surfaces to our city's environment, thus increasing runoff and worsening the heat island effect, which is worsening as summers get hotter, as you know. New sidewalks need to be made of permeable paving or just gravel. Lighting, the city should use as little lighting as possible and use only motion sensor lights that turn on only when they are needed, as other municipalities have used elsewhere. This will not only, of course, save energy for the city, but they will also protect the trees and other plants from the light that disturbs their photosynthesis, making their leaves less edible for insects. You can see the recent research on this. As well as protect birds and animals from the light disturbance at night, as well as humans, of course. So we ask that you, one, inform residents fully as soon as possible in the name of transparency. Two, preserve the trees that are there. Three, protect the Gary Oaks. And four, use as little lighting as possible. Thank you very much. We appreciate your serious consideration of these matters.
Madam Clerk, that's the last hand I see raised to provide virtual public comment. Am I missing anyone?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Very well, I'll declare the public comment period closed. We'll now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of March tenth, twenty twenty-five. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. C, approval of the minutes of the city council retreat of March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. D, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of three million, seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-three cents for the period of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-five through March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. E, approve, approval of payroll checks in the amount of three million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents for the period of February sixteenth, twenty twenty-five through March fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. F, motion number twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, authorizing the execution of an agreement with K V H Construction Company in the amount of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars for the Harry Todd Park improvements. G, motion number twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Atlas Technical Consultants in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars for services related to the Mount Tacoma Drive roadway project. H, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, planning commission meeting minutes of December fourth, twenty twenty-four. Two, planning commission meeting minutes of January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Three, planning commission meeting minutes of February fifth, twenty twenty-five. And four, planning commission meeting minutes of February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you very much. Is there any item which a council member wishes to remove from consent agenda consideration at this time? Seeing none, uh, I'll ask for a motion to adopt a consent agenda as presented. So moved. It's been moved by Councilmember Pearson, seconded by Councilmember Bokey, that we adopt a consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Mr. Brandstetter.
Mr. Mayor, I'm certainly supportive of everything that's on the consent agenda, but I did want to, um, point out that in the, uh, in the contract regarding the work to be done at Harry Todd Park, uh, in the, uh, in the summary here, I was glad to see and, um, you know, um, uh, um, you know, and interesting to, to, to make sure that the, uh, that there was a, uh, an opportunity to provide some sort of a, uh, recognition of a, of a, of a member of the community that in the past had some input into providing the park, it was specifically some of those things that are, that are going away. And, uh, I just did, well, that's not a part of the motion that before this, I just would want to emphasize that I wouldn't want that to get lost is, is something that down the road that we would want to do particularly that, um, if, if it was going to have something to do with a, a piece of public art, which would should involve the Arts Commission or was going to involve in a, something to do with naming something which would then in, involve other procedures that need, need to take place. But I'm glad to see that we're not just focused on the physical element, but that we're, that we're, that we're, that we're looking at, uh, an individual who has, uh, some history of the growth of the development of that park as part of that, that neighborhood. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Brandstetter. Any other thoughts or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now move to the regular agenda. Ordinances, the first ordinance, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number eight twenty-seven, amending Lakewood Municipal Code, Chapter one point four-four, entitled General Penalties.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Uh, before you do tonight is a request for council action regarding ordinance number eight-two-seven. The focus of ordinance eight-two-seven is Lakewood Municipal Code, Chapter one point four-four, General Penalties. Uh, the reason for what you see before you today with amendments is, uh, uh, aimed to establish a holistic and strategic and standardized approach to the enforcement across the entirety of the Lakewood Municipal Code when it comes to code enforcement. It would standardize procedures for noticing a violation, stop work orders, as well as penalties for continued action, should you move forward. The city currently has two enforcement arms really that we look at. So there's the Community Safety and Resource Team, which is, you know, housed and manned by the Police Department, as well as the Planning and Public Works Inspection Group, which is both construction inspection as well as rental housing. The existing code as it's laid out is not holistic in its approach. Um, some areas have areas for enforcement while others do not. This gives a standardized approach across all of it, um, with very good noticing to everybody as to what they'll see exactly and exactly how to remediate the violation that they're looking at. The recommendation tonight would be for, uh, acceptance or adoption of this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Remack. Uh, any questions of Mr. Remack before we consider the ordinance? Again, just, uh, for the benefit of the public, this was an item that we did spend some time during the study session reviewing. So we have gone through it in some detail as a body. Thank you, Mr. Remack. So I have a motion to adopt ordinance number eight-two-seven.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Brandstetter, seconded by Councilmember Bell. We adopt ordinance number eight-two-seven, amending the municipal code, Chapter one four-four, entitled General Penalties. Any further discussion? And I think Mr. Remack, uh, set it forth quite clearly for us. And again, we did review this during the study session. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of adoption of ordinance eight-two-seven, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ordinance eight-two-seven has been adopted. I don't see any items of unfinished or new business, so I'll turn to Mr. Coffield for his report.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, good evening, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, handful of updates this evening. Uh, the first is that, um, as you know, Lakeview Light and Power, they typically host their annual meeting here at City Hall, and that is actually going to occur on April twenty-four, twenty-fourth at six P M. Right here in this room. And as in past years, the city council, you need to identify a council member, uh, to participate in the, in the voting and the ballot election. Um, since we are a member of the co-op, um, our facilities, some of our facilities, uh, get power from them. And, um, I know Councilmember Bell has, uh, has volunteered and stepped up, uh, to be able to do that, but Mayor, I would ask maybe under, um, council comments to just to get some consensus on that as you've done in, in, in previous years as, as well. Um, I also just wanted to let you know that, um, last week or week before last, actually, the Government Finance Officers Association awarded again the, the, the city their certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for its two thousand twenty-three annual comprehensive financial report. This is the eleventh consecutive year that the city has been awarded this national recognition. I do want to point out that this is a very prestigious accolade, is a testament to the hard work, dedication and professionalism of our finance team led by our Deputy City Manager, Todd Kraus, and is a positive reflection and unwavering commitment to transparency, financial accuracy and excellence in our financial reporting by our finance team, as well as our city employees, and of course, the policy direction and leadership of the City Council. We all play a part in that. This recognition not only brings honor and recognition to our finance team, but also the entire organization and underscores the critical role they play for our success. Because at the end of the day, in order for us to be able to do what we're doing, we do have to have a solid, strong foundation of, of, of finance. And also just wanted to point out this receipt places the, this award, rather, places the city in a very small company of, of recipients, in that only about two percent of all cities, cities, towns and villages in the country actually are able to be recognized with this award, and just is about nineteen thousand. So we're in very, very small company, and I think there's only about thirty or thirty-two in Washington State, and that includes all, all municipal organizations. So again, a very positive reflection, and just offer my congratulations to the council as well for your due diligence in managing our finances. Couple of weeks ago, we went back and we checked with D S H S regarding adult family home businesses, and just wanted to report now that there's, D S H S has licensed two hundred and twelve adult family home businesses here, here in Lakewood. So I just wanted to give you a courtesy heads up, give you a courtesy heads up on that. And given most of the businesses have the maximum of six beds, that means there's twelve hundred adult family home beds here, here in Lakewood. So again, just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Lakewood businesses through first quarter, there's a total of a hundred and eight new businesses that have opened up in, in the Lakewood community. It was thirty-eight in January, thirty-five in February, and another thirty-five in, in, in March. And so we continue to see, you know, a number of new business activity in Lakewood, as well as employment growth. And by the way, our employment growth over the last ten years has averaged over one percent per year, which is actually outpacing other local municipalities, regional, state, and even federal job growth projections. So again, a very positive reflection on what's happening here in, in Lakewood. I know there's been a lot of questions about what's happening at the federal government and financing, and generally speaking, the, the city of Lakewood, we have not been, you know, that negatively impacted regarding loss of revenue or anything. We did learn recently that there was one particular program that the federal government has, a grant program for energy efficiency and greenhouse gas reduction. And in the city, we had applied for a hundred twenty-three thousand dollar grant. We understand that that program at this point in time has, has been eliminated. Along those lines, we also understand due to state budget issues, Washington State Department of Commerce has eliminated any funding opportunity for cities to be able to move forward with implementing House Bill eleven eighty-one, which again is focused on climate change and resiliency and greenhouse gases. And basically, we, we have a duty and obligation to comply by those state standards by twenty twenty-nine. And long story short, we were supposed to receive seven hundred thousand dollars. But it looks like there's, that money is going to evolve maybe in the next couple of years, as opposed to in, 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 in the, in the current biennium. So rather than being available in twenty-five and twenty-six, it looks like it's going to be available in twenty-seven and twenty-eight. So we are going to have to adjust our, 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 our work plan there. And we'll keep you updated as, as, as that moves along. One particular grant that we were concerned about, because the state had kind of gone radio silent on it, was our federal raise grant for our downtown transportation study. And even though it's a federal grant, transportation funding, it does, WashDOT serves as the, as the, they, they, they oversee that, 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 that program. And so we learned on Friday that they approved the release of those funds to the city, which totals one point one million. We have executed the agreement with both WashDOT and the U S Department of Transportation as, as well. So the next step is to move forward with the R F Q process, which we hope to be able to do in the May or June timeframe. That is something that we do have to run by WashDOT, get the work underway later this summer and into the fall. And the goal and objective is to try and have that study completed by December of two thousand twenty-six. So it is a, it is a heavy lift. It is a big project. But again, we're hoping to get underway later, late, later this summer, if not, if not sooner. As it relates to your calendars, wanted to point out a few things. This Thursday from eleven thirty to one thirty over at the McGavick Center, the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce, in partnership with Twin Star Credit Union, is holding a scholarship fundraiser. The theme is the nineteen seventies rock and roll, and the city does have a table of eight. There are two seats available. I know a couple of council members, I know the mayor and Councilmember Bell have signed up. If you have an interest in one of those seats, let us know, let myself or the, the city clerk know, and we'd be more than happy to sign you up for that. Also, on, on Wednesday, April tenth, over, also at the McGavick Center, District Six County Councilmember Jenny Hitchen, who represents Lakewood, will be hosting an in-district county council meeting from five thirty to seven thirty. You had heard from the Youth Council regarding the Youth Empowerment Summit on, on Saturday. Also this weekend, on Saturday and Sunday, we will be having our spring community cleanup over at the Lakewood Transfer Station from eight A M to two P M with the last vehicle accepted at one forty-five. If there's any interest in any of you volunteering to help out with kind of the flow and management of vehicles and such, let us know. And Michael Vargas, our Assistant to the City Manager and Policy Analyst, would certainly appreciate having you out there if you, if you have an interest. Looking out into next week, on Wednesday, April sixteenth, Communities and Schools of Lakewood, which now supports not only the Clover Park School District, but also the Franklin Pierce School District, will be having their annual community breakfast and fundraising event at the McGavick Center from eight thirty A M to ten A M. And again, there is a city table that has been set aside, so if you have an interest on that, let us know. And there's no cost to attend, to attend that event. And then a couple of days later, on Friday, April eighteenth, from five P M to nine P M, is the annual cops versus teachers basketball game, another fundraising event over at, at Lakes High School. And then I'll just close out with April twenty-fourth, the Lakeview, Lakeview Light and Power Annual Meeting. And then April twenty-sixth, which is a Saturday beginning at noon, again, in support of your proclamation for Parks Appreciation Day. That'll be happening at various city parks. And then as a reschedule, on April thirtieth, which leaves a Wednesday, the Mayor's Coffee House, we will have at the Fort Stillichum Park Pavilion, and again, the subject matter will be the West Pierce Emergency Management Coalition. So with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you very much, Mister Coffield. Any questions? Well, seeing none. Guess everyone is watching to see if I make us through the meeting before eight o'clock. So with that, I'll call on Mister Bokey for council comments to start us off.
I will attempt to be very brief in my remarks, Mister Mayor. Just a couple of items. Looking forward to Saturday, it's a big day. But I, I do want to make a comment on, in my day job, I was listening to the Pierce County Council's Health and Human Services Committee last week, and they had extensive presentations about seniors and, and how many more seniors they're helping through aging and long-term care. But the part that I found interest in was the, the senior centers, and they actually showed the counts. And the way they counted, so they would, so they would discount like major events that people show up once. They said, how many people, unduplicated people showed up at least five times during the year? And Lakewood Senior Center is on top. Eight hundred and three individuals showed up at least five times last year. The next one was Point Defiance Restaurant, which is six hundred and ninety-four. And after that, no one was above even four hundred, right? So the, the next one was three hundred and eleven, which is mid-county, which is a well-run senior center and out in the Midland area. So you can see that, and they were actually talking about different ways to fund senior centers and whatnot. And, and maybe if they decide to do a different funding model, we'll actually do better with it. But anyway, that, I just wanted folks to know that, and thanks to Mary Dodsworth and, and Elizabeth and all the folks involved in that, in the Parks Department. I do want to make one comment. I, I, you know, because I'm just, someone made a comment tonight in, in public, in a, a public comment, and, and it's also kind of underlying a lot of the opposition to the multifamily tax exemption in this community. But I think the individual who was opposing tonight any housing or housing said it best, an unholy alliance. We need to, supporting housing is not an unholy alliance. And, and this idea that's seeping into our community and that housing is a bad thing, new housing is not a good thing, is, is really not, you know, not something that I'm, you know, that I can stand by and just say it's an unholy alliance. Because he used it in, in regards to the, the individual speaking tonight, used in regards to the, the development out in, in Spanaway. Keep in mind, that development is for hardcore, long-term homeless people. And it's, it's, it has to be built according to standards. They're just not slapping in the middle of this pond, you know, and letting them pollute and various things like that. We gave money to it with the idea that it had to have at least sewers. But the idea that this somehow giving people who have been on the streets for decades is somehow an unholy alliance that we've been involved in, I just absolutely, I, I, I just viscerally disagree with that comment. And, and I, we just really need to push back on people who say, you know, we're going to oppose housing because those people might have, get it. And on a night where we had the fair house, we were celebrating the Fair Housing Act, we still have to have these conversations. You know, I, well, I'll just let it go at that, but I've said my piece. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Bokey. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Light change in, in tone. But I, I enjoyed the retreat we had last Saturday. Everyone here coming in on a weekend day to really set our strategy up for the year was really good. I appreciated city staff, Mister Remack, specifically going through his plans and our plans. That went really well. So wanted to mention that. And then the other item I had was just to shout out to Lakewood P D for their poise and professionalism. About a week and a half ago, I was awoken to a car crashing into a pole in front of my house at a high rate of speed, and power was out on our whole street. And there was a, a woman screaming that was in the accident, and thankfully she was uninjured, but was very upset, understandably, and the, the officers and sergeants who were on the scene were very, doing a great job of de-escalating the, the scene and just did a great job. So shout out to those folks. That's all I got.
Very good. Glad to hear no one was hurt. Councilmember Brandstetter.
Yeah, Mister Mayor, thank you. That, I had a, a chance to attend the Skills USA competition that was a state-level competition, which was held at Clover Park Technical College in some forty different professional skills and attributes and careers to be able to go through and do that. And it was a competition that included high school students as well as, 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 as college students to do that. And supported by many industry partners, being able to go through and do that. So it both showcased Clover Park Technical College as a first-rate training location, but it also highlighted that there are a great many people who looking at career and technical education as opposed to traditional, long-term university higher-level education as a way to get ahead, to be able to go and do that, and that there are multiple pathways to, to allow them to, to do that. And so it, it was, it was something that was both just encouraging about the fact that there are lots of young people that know what they want to do and have, and have focus and purpose. But, and it, it, and it highlighted Clover Park Technical College, as was one of our vision to have a, be, be recognized for the quality of our, our, our educational facilities of all types, to be able to go and do that. So I, I think that it was, you know, the, the city did a good job through Clover Park Technical College of hosting a significant statewide group of folks to be able to go and do that. That on the, on the eighteenth coming up, I'll be participating in the initial meeting of the elected officials council that, that is going to be providing governance over the county's a project to provide a unified approach to homelessness that, that's going on. It's, it's the beginning stage of a new year, and there's a, there's a, an elected officials council, and then there's a slightly larger council of, of, of staff folks that Lakewood will be represented on, that'll be working, guiding that work more often, and then there'd be some other advisory committees and committees that go on to do that. But we're hoping to set some groundwork at that meeting and get oppression to go, and it somewhat relates to a, a this is my word, a less parochial approach to it than, than, than what we heard from the, a couple of weeks ago, from the group that came to us that also had their proposals about how they were going to address homelessness here in the, about the continuum of care HUD, HUD group that is, is going on. So there's a lot of, a lot of things going on in that realm, okay? And it, it relates to Mister Bokey's comments about that if you can get away from the, the, the NIMBYism around help dealing with, with homelessness. There are things you can do, but then you've got to sort of get people on the same page to try to act, make, make, make people actually accomplish things rather than just doing random things and go on off. I, I thought that the the arts reception this evening here, here at the City Hall was a, not only was the art great, both the, the visual art, but the, the, the music and that, that was there, but that the, the energy in the room and that emphasized the, some of the diversities of culture of, of the artists of, of, that, that ranged from four to eighty. That, that, that were, that were there, being able to go and do that. And they, and they, and they came from a variety of backgrounds. A good number of the young artists were from military families, okay? Who lived in Lakewood, Dupont, and on JBLM, to be able to go and do that. So to the extent that this particular reception moved the bar, and then, then, for, for future receptions, it was, it was a good thing, and it was highly representative of the diversity in, in our community to do that. I will be here for the study session next week, but I will not be here for the meeting on the twenty-first to be, to be, be able to go and do that. I'm going to be out of town. I'm, and I'm not quite sure whether I'm going to have the connectivity to, 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 to join the meeting on, on that, on that day, to, to be able to go and do that. And then like Mister Bokey, I was listening to the public comment today, okay? And I I had a disagreement with a different comment than, than I had a disagreement with a different comment than, than he did. Okay, uh, in my mind, maybe I share some of, some of his thoughts around that, like that. But I, 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 it, it had to do with the, 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 the comment about that if money is available, we just spend it haphazardly. And I think that, uh, you know, you know, uh, I have noted, and earlier in the meeting, you, you noted to, uh, our commitment that we had made to try to make sure that, that money is used in an impactful way and with, 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 with equity and consideration of every, of, of the entire community being able to go and do that. And I think that we, that, that, that we do that. We, and we don't, obviously when you set goals, your goals don't align with everybody's personal goals, but that, um, that, uh, that, that, that we don't send money and particularly the comment talked about capital projects. Okay, well, if there's money for a capital project, you just do it no matter what the, the impact or side, uh, other consequences might be. And I have been very impressed over the past months and years, actually, with the fact that, 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 that our public works and planning, planning folks, uh, when they come to us with things that are being planned, that they have really looked at the situation, whether, whether it's with trees or whether it's people, whether it's reaching out very specifically to the people who live along the specific areas where a capital project is willing to, to go and do that. And while I, and, and while I would hope that all of those people, in, in every case, didn't get their wishes, but that they all get heard. And that, and that there are efforts made to try to figure out how can things be, be done. I think we do a good job with that. Uh, and, and I think that it's important that, um, where there is, where there are resources, funding, grant or, or, or other things, that we take every opportunity to make life better for the residents of the people who live in Lakewood, uh, to be able to go and do that, um, rather than forego using them because we can't satisfy everybody, you know, we, you know, we can't make, think, we can't do things perfectly to satisfy everyone. And we, but we don't let that get in the way of doing the good for a lot. Um, and that, 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 that goes on with it. So, um, uh, in, 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 in any event, uh, I think that, uh, we, we are very much on the right track on, 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 on a lot of things. And that, uh, we do the best we can in balancing needs. Okay? We're, 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 we're not, uh, we're not prioritizing any one need over everything else, but we really do a good job of balancing, uh, and, uh, the, the city manager and staff do an excellent job of, of balancing and, and working to do that. So I'm, I'm very supportive of their way of going about doing that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Branstadter. Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I always like to get the reports from youth council and see new faces, uh, you know, each year kind of up there. And it sounds like they're going to have a, a wonderful turnout at the summit here. I had said six, 400 people or some 600. 200? Okay, yeah. Yeah. Um, great turnout there. I won't be able to attend that unfortunately. And then I also enjoyed the retreat. The, this is being my second retreat, it, it was kind of nice to be able to reflect on both. And I, I feel like both, um, formats were needed at, at, at the time, I guess, you know? So, um, I would just say that moving forward, you know, making sure that we're kind of have some flow, rethink things, you know, once we hit some key goals and stuff, be able to, you know, bring the consultant in again to kind of really, you know, reinforce, you know, what we're thinking it together. I thought that that was really good. And so now we're executing, now we're in the executing phase. So it was a, it was a good, a good retreat, different than last year, but I think totally good. So, um, I also attended PSRC and, um, the last few PSRC meetings have been kind of the same, um, just a lot of, a lot of comments about the budget and, you know, where things are falling out, uh, you know, the federal, uh, budget. And then there, there's, there's talk about the state trying to come up with some balanced approach, um, which has a number of new revenue sources. I don't know, you know, it didn't look like there was a ton of cutting going on. It seems, um, you know, pretty par for the course. So that was a little discouraging. I'd like to, you know, see, I guess maybe my idea of a more balanced approach. But, um, anyway, lots, lots more to come there. And, um, as the state, you know, moves through budget and decisions are made, we'll kind of see where, where everything falls out there.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to give a big congratulations to our Arts Commission and how they brought together really just an amazing show that's out there. And, um, like you mentioned, it's 45 students of all ages that go from elementary to 80 years old, I think. And the students are from Dupont, Stillicum, and of course, the Lakewood area. So please go out and check it out and enjoy it. And the reception was wonderful. And there was music, opera, all the stuff.
I thought that was you.
It was me. It was me. Yeah. So congrats to that. And then I will be at the youth council event on Saturday with my daughter. She is registered and we're excited to, uh, to be a part of that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to comment on the retreat as well. I feel that, well, the retreat went really well. I, um, we had great discussions and, and, uh, everybody got the answer, questions out and answers. So thanks to the presenter, it was a good job. Uh, so I'm looking forward to, as we move forward with the plans that we have in place. This afternoon, I had the opportunity to do the welcome at the Arts Commission. Um, the event is growing. It's really great. The opera singer was absolutely wonderful. She surprised me. I didn't expect her voice to be so strong, but very much so. Uh, the, the, the good, the theme was cultural clash. And like, uh, Councilmember Bell said, it was like 45, uh, students participating from in elementary to eight, the year of 80 years old. So that was a, uh, it was, it was interesting, very good. I was able to present coins to one of the artists as well as the opera singer. So for the city of Lakewood, thanks to the Branstadter. Okay? And as honorary commander for the, um, Air Mobility Command, we had our orientation , uh, last week and, um, at, at JBLM. We were supposed to be in Illinois. However, it got canceled and we were having it virtual. And during the virtual meeting, the hailstorm was so bad, we had to cancel that as well. So we were glad we didn't make it to Scott Air Force Base on this time. But one of the things that I wanted to share was that, uh, what the air force and the military area is going through is the same thing that we've discussed at our, uh, retreat. We talked about housing and how we could, what we can do to help, uh, bring our airmen closer to their workplace as opposed to them going far away. And so what I learned from that is the fact that, um, the base is planning to build a lot of homes on base for these, uh, young, for the airmen period. For, because even though we do the low income and we do the, do what we can to bring our apartments up to code, some of it is still above their pay grade. So they're having a hard time with that. We also talked about, uh, childcare was another issue that they talked about. And I was able to share with them that that was a discussion that the city is having to help with that process as well. A lot of discussion around the, the retreat came to be part of what I, we had said in our meetings. So the youth council, I will be there Saturday. I will be at the event Saturday night with the mayor. And that's all I have.
Very good. Well, thank you. Well, since we now have reached the eight o'clock time slot, I can go till nine, I think, and wrap up my comments. I'll do what I can for you. Uh, ju- just a few, uh, comments. The, I want to just ducktail Mr. Coffield's comments on the award for the stewardship of the city's finances. It goes without saying that that is an incredible accolade for the city, its staff, and certainly for the financial policies put in place by the council some years ago. You know, when, uh, the state and, and other jurisdictions are going through challenges with budgeting, I, I would hope that the residents would take notice that the city's finances have been very well stewarded, stewarded, is that the right term? And, uh, outsiders who actually watch this stuff have provided accolades for the financial acumen of the city and its staff. So I just want to thank them for that and thank Mr. Coffield, uh, for that and for his continual mentorship of his, uh, staff to achieve not only, you know, good work for the residents, but to get recognized for doing good work for the residents. So I appreciate that. The arts reception tonight was fantastic. Uh, again, I agree with Mr. Branstadter and others that it's kind of raised the bar. It's neat to see that the Arts Commission continues to do great things when they're given the opportunity to do so. Uh, the woman who headed up the, the group tonight is very excited about being here and she would love to do it again and, uh, perhaps look at other opportunities with Lakewood Gardens, which is a recipient to lodging tax funds, as we know. So it's, uh, spreading goodwill and, and good cheer throughout the community for all things art and culture. The retreat was well done. Again, I echo those comments. I'm not sure we gave, uh, complete and adequate feedback, Mr. Coffield, on, uh, the issue of the potential senior center, the sites we discussed, kind of generally, I don't know if we gave you the consensus comment you needed to maybe move forward with a site or two or not. Uh, but if we need to kind of revisit that, you know, in another meeting, we can certainly do that. But I thought it was well done, uh, and I echo the comments of council members. In terms of public comments, I just have a few of my own. And with regard to, uh, Mount Tacoma Drive project, I, I don't certainly disagree that more notice to the residents who may be affected by, uh, the project down the road would be helpful. Certainly in advance of the survey work, it would be good to get folks, uh, to at least know that it's been on the tip, the transportation improvement, uh, program. It is forthcoming in terms of design in 2025 and, and construction 26. So to the extent we can give notice before the flags and the survey work goes out, that's probably a good thing. Um, I, I do want to, I don't want to say pushback, but comment a little bit consistent with other comments tonight. You know, the, the grant monies that our staff have successfully obtained for, uh, the benefit of the residents here in Lakewood on any number of things, whether it's infrastructure projects or park improvements, um, have, have not been, uh, unearned dollars in this community. I look at it, in my humble opinion, as, uh, Lakewood, uh, receiving back a bit of its taxpayer dollars that have flowed, uh, both to the state and to the federal government. And it's Lakewood's opportunity to bring some of those dollars back because other communities are competing, uh, with us to get dollars for their own communities to do good things and, and good investments. So I'm pleased, uh, that we have done well with obtaining grants and, uh, certainly and effectively utilizing grant monies to the benefit of city residents, including the, uh, public, uh, projects for infrastructure improvements and sidewalks. And I think that Mr. Blocker and Ms. Blocker said it well, that improvements, uh, affect not just one particular population, but a tapestry of populations, whether it's folks with disabilities or young families that would love to, to walk their children safely to and from, uh, the parks or the town center. These sidewalk improvements have impact and I'm proud to say that we have done yeoman's work on any number of significant, uh, improvement projects around this entire city, uh, to a great extent. So I'm very proud of the work we've done. I don't think that those are dollars improperly spent or unearned. To the contrary, I think Lakewood deserves to have good things happen to it. Other public comments that have been interesting, Ms. Grimley sent to us some, uh, articles in the media, uh, one of which you may have seen in the Suburban Times. Uh, one of our former councilmembers wrote about the issue of the MFTE discussion and the RTA discussion. And I think it's great to have a discussion, you know, more discussion is better than less. But I do, uh, I, I get concerned when I see comments in writing such as this, "A city proposal to give developers a tax break to replace small businesses, tree groves and the abandoned library site with box apartments should get everyone's attention." Well, I think overstating, uh, what the intent of the economic development tool that is at least on the table for discussion before the planning commission, overstating with hyperbole is what should get everyone's attention. Rather than calling it something that it's not, I really think that that does a disservice to the public and its legitimate conversation about the policy objective. Terms of events, I do plan on attending the Rotary event this Saturday. That'll be in the evening. It's Lakewood Rotary's effort to raise funds, uh, to provide further investment in the community. Uh, the project this year is for Rotary to raise monies to enhance the Nourish facility that is on the corner of, I think Lakewood Drive and Silicon Boulevard. So if you're inclined to invest, as I hope all the public commenters are, uh, inclined to invest some of the resources to help those folks and communities here in Lakewood that deserve it, that would be a great thing to attend. Um, I will also be at the youth council event, uh, on Saturday. And then for the rest of the week, there's just a lot of stuff going on. On Wednesday, uh, I have a meeting, just so you know, with the Korean American Association of Tacoma. They've asked to meet with me. I'm not exactly sure for what, maybe it's just an introduction. Uh, so we'll have an interpreter there, I believe, and a few folks from the Korean American Association. So Mr. Branstadter, if you'd like to, uh, come to that as well, you're more than welcome. It's 10 o'clock on Wednesday, uh, this Wednesday, the ninth. And then on, at 11:30, uh, on Wednesday, right after that, I have to go to, uh, the environmental building over University Place for the Women's Council Realtors, uh, Mayor Panel Discussion. So there will be several mayors from around Pierce County that are on a panel discussing, uh, the impact of housing, uh, in their jurisdictions and I guess any other topic that may come to mind. So that'll be an interesting event. And then later that evening at 5:30, after I raised to and from Auburn, uh, I have the Downtown Neighborhood Association meeting at the Lakewood Library. So I'm sure there'll be conversations about the RTA and the MFTE discussion. So, uh, all sorts of good opportunities to chat with folks. Look forward to that. Look forward to having a healthy, uh, factually-based, robust conversation about any number of things. Anything else for the good of the order? Ah, to Lakewood Light and Power.
And I, I am certainly fine with her being our voting member.
Thank you. I think that maybe she should make a, uh, an election, uh, pitch for herself to attend and be our voting member.
I will be attending, so I thought I could also represent the council if council would be so inclined. I will be there.
Very good. Well, thank you, Mr. Branstadter, for that. A vociferous objections to Councilmember Bill representing the fair city of Lakewood at the Lakeview Light and Power Annual Meeting. Seeing none by acclamation, you are it. Thank you for that. Thank you for the reminder, Mr. Branstadter. It's always good to tag somebody at the end of a meeting. It's a good thing. All right. Thank you all. We're adjourned.
A point of order, Mr. Mayor.
I forgot, we have an executive session. We are not adjourned. Thank you. It wasn't at the bottom of my sheet here, except, uh, there it is in yellow. Thank you, Ms. Ms. Schumacher. I stand corrected. The city council will recess into executive session for 20 minutes approximately pursuant to RCW 423110 sub 1 sub I to discuss with legal counsel litigation or potential litigation. We are not expected to take action following the executive session other than to adjourn the meeting, uh, when I have the right to do so. So thank you for pulling me back from the abyss, Ms. City Attorney. We will now be in recess.
And then we'll get back to the rest of the session. And then we'll get back to the executive session. And then we'll get back to the committee. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate. And then we'll get back to the House. And then we'll get back to the Senate.